Meeting called in 7:08 PM. Chair, uh, Madam Chair Akers, present. Commissioner Rosley?
Present.
Commissioner Musson?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Present.
Commissioner Carmichael? Craig Miles?
Craig Miles.
I'm sorry. It's Craig Miles. And Planner Jeff Shorley is here today. So at this point, just as a point of record, we'd like to welcome our new representative, our liaison to the council, Chris Craig Miles. And welcome.
Trustee, now, it's Craig Miles, right?
Miles, Craig Miles.
Oh, okay. Okay, I just want to make sure that I know that I'm saying it right. I don't want to say it wrong.
Craig and Miles, many miles to go.
Right.
Just like Craig and Miles.
Craig Miles. You got it. Because I didn't want to cut something off.
Public hearing, the public hearing scheduled for this evening, approval of the agenda.
I made the motion that we approved the agenda. Is that...
Motion has been made to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, approval of the minutes from November the 3rd. It would be in order for a motion to approve.
I did not see them.
I didn't actually see them either.
So I personally, has anybody else seen them? I'll make a motion to table the minutes. Is that okay?
Sure.
Sure.
Have they done? Yes. Clerk Mac should have sent them out.
She may have forgotten because we didn't meet
We didn't meet in December.
So that's probably why they got overlooked. We didn't meet in December.
Right.
I don't think that I...
Can we let them go for two months?
You know what, I don't know if we can. That's what I'm saying. If they're ready, let's take a look at it.
I couldn't find them over there. I looked over.
Okay, did you get a second on the motion?
There wasn't a motion.
I did.
Oh, you have a motion to approve the minute?
No, to table.
It's motion.
That was a motion.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bud, you've seen the minutes?
Uh huh.
Okay. Would you please just stick them, stick a copy of them in each of the planners' box?
I will.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And also communicate with the new elected clerk and just make sure she, you know, that she understands that you're going to do that one time.
Okay.
Next thing on the agenda is communication correspondence. The last time we met, we had gotten a communication from Lennox Township informing us about updates of their master plan and we referred that to our planners to review that for us. And so I'm just, all we really need to know tonight, since we don't have, you know, like a detailed report or anything, is whether or not you saw anything object that you objected to that was obvious and blatant.
No, no, Amanda took a look at the plan. She did do a write-up, which I think she emailed out, but apparently didn't get to the meeting tonight. We'll do it for the next meeting. When we looked at it, she primarily looked at the Grashit corridor, thinking of how it's going to transition going north. No major changes on the southern end of Grashit. Most of their changes that are taking place are on the north, towards the northern end, towards Richmond. They're looking to, they're proposing to rezone a number of those properties out there from commercial to industrial because they feel that it's more likely the land use that's going to be used is closely adjacent to the dump out there. Or I should say the landfill. Other than that, everything, there were really no objectionable items or anything that was in conflict or opposed to what we have in the master plan for the village.
Did you say something was sent to us?
Yes. There was an email that was sent.
Nobody got it?
I don't remember getting an email with a link to upload the master plan.
Yeah.
Who would have been mailed an email to?
It was mailed to you, I believe, and to, I believe it was mailed to you and to the clerk and myself.
On what date did you?
Clerk Mac or?
It was sent to Clerk Mac, yes. I'll tell you in one second.
And what was it? Remember, she...
It was that.
Hi.
I got an email about rezoning for her in October.
Uh huh. I've got that.
Would you check that?
I'll have a check. We'll get copies out to you guys on all of those items.
We have three rezonings.
That's the last one I got.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Yeah, so just, um, let me, Bud, let me just ask one other thing. Could we have Amanda email you a copy of that?
Sure.
For me?
Sure.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Pretty good.
Sure, no problem.
Okay. And then when you get it, just let me know and I'll make sure everybody gets a copy. Email them, okay?
Can you just send it to everybody? All of them, that way it's just...
Well, see, that is what our problem is, is that from what I understand, when I met with the new clerk, a lot of information was missing in the office. She didn't have any of your emails.
I didn't even mean that from her, so...
Late last week.
Right.
Yeah, after I got...
Yeah, I got an email from her too.
Right, after I got bonded involved. So I'm explaining that's what the problem is. She didn't have the contact information to get this stuff out here in town.
I apologize. It came from Amanda to me and I forwarded it out to you. They might know further than that, so I'm going to send it to everybody right now.
Thank you.
You're all right, Jeff.
And then, now, everybody's emails aspiring, you know, Bud? As far as that...
In terms of the review for that, LaVonda's making... There's nobody that can...
That's the case.
Unless they have objections.
It's the...
Generally, yeah, so there's no stipulations that we have.
Okay, matters of consideration. Not old business, not a new business. We have site plan review for the PMR Ventures. Mr. Jeff?
We have received a preliminary site plan from the PMR folks back in, I believe it was in November we received it first. There were issues with that one we sent it back. And then we finally received the copy that went back to planning and also went to the engineer. In, I will speak for the planning review. John Kokoski and staff reviewed it against, reviewed it in light of the, excuse me, light of the zoning ordinance. And in light industrial, there are basically a couple of things that he called out, which are in the letter here. In light industrial, the light industrial ordinance indicates that parking is to be placed on the side or rear of a building. We have a side and front parking here. There are limitations with the dimensions of the lot, but potentially a design could be changed or potentially a variance could be requested if the proper amount of parking could not be fit on the lot with the way it's currently configured. As far as access, there is, in the zoning ordinance, that any industrial access that's on the cul-de-sac, there has to be a front access that's at least equivalent to 70% of the minimum lot width, which would be 175 feet. We're at 103 feet, which is 60%. It would be non-compliant and a dimensional variance would be required for that approach and that driveway.
Excuse me, could you explain that, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you explain that again, please? Do you have another copy of the letter?
Yeah, actually, I will provide you copies with both of these letters on the way up. This kind of spells out the things that need to be addressed and the places in the ordinance where they're cited. In this case, the zoning ordinance states that on the cul-de-sac, it must have a front access that's equivalent to 70% of the minimum block width. And in the case of the plan that was put in, it's approximately 60 feet. It's a dimensional constraint of the lot, but would therefore potentially require a variance. The other two things that John had noted was, and I believe the engineer noted as well, the lighting that's been proposed for the north face of the building. There is residential up there. Potentially, we need to be up a different type of design to reduce the amount of light that's being thrown off. And I believe the engineering heard things that a lighter or photometric drawing would be preferred for that, which is one of the items that need to be put in with the site plan. And then I think there was 160 square foot additional landscaping would need to be for, would be required on the site due to the light industrial zoning. I think there's 155 square feet that's there in the plan. But again, if the parking or things were to change, that may change in the plan. So there were really only two major things that the planning saw in the zoning that would require potentially variances for that. There is a list here from the engineering firm, Fossil Con. They had looked at it. There were a number of elements that they had noted that were either missing for the drawing or things that they needed additional information related to drainage. And I'll give you guys a list of these items. In fact, you can have copies of all of these letters if you'd like, though. Thank you.
Certainly. Surprised, surprised that that's, the cul-de-sac's private.
Sure.
You know what I mean? It's not, I think that's a...
So this is not a final site plan review at this point in time. It's just a preliminary review. I will be available, and I'm certain that probably Shannon from Fossil Con will be available to answer any questions that you guys have in terms of making the site compliant or what changes could potentially be...
I would get ahold of you. Do we have a phone number to get ahold of? If we do, okay.
Sure, we tried to get these comments a few days in advance and we get over there. I apologize. We were out of the office. Ours were completed. I think the engineer just did hers today. In fact, they kind of did a hurry up because they knew we wanted to have the meeting tonight because they were closed over the whole holiday and the village was a little leaky, I can say. But we did want to be able to get you guys into this meeting.
Hey, Jeff.
Yes.
I noticed that Shannon outlines more than what John outlined here as far as...
And she would, because, I mean, her review is more of a technical nature in terms of elevation, drainage on the property, compliance with the utilities. We're looking at it from the planning sites, purely from the zoning, what's in the zoning ordinance.
Gotcha.
So at what point would these issues brought up by Shannon be addressed? I mean, because some of the, how relevant is all of the soil erosion permits and all of that?
Those issues, those issues are relevant. They do need to be addressed. I think the action that we...
Is that passed us or?
No, I think the action we'd be looking for at this point would be to kick it back to you guys. Let's address these issues and bring it back to this body for next month. At that point, at that point, I think we would be able to approve it. But I think what we, let these gentlemen decide how they want to approach the variance. They want to make the request for variances or if they change their site plan or design to not require them.
And how extensive? Have you noticed the site plan would have to be?
The parking would have, the one issue is the parking being in the front of the property.
Yeah.
We'd be able to move to a side of your lot. And then, I don't really think there's really much that could be, there's really nothing that can be done about the access to the property in terms of its minimum lot width. That variance would be... But since it's, since it is a, since it is a dimensional restriction of the property, you would need to go. Basically, the procedures rule says that if you go for that variance, that would need to go before zoning ordinance. They are the body that would grant that.
And which one for the 70%?
For...
For annual?
For annual.
I mean, this is all... It's a private, right? It's a private?
Uh huh.
I was looking at this stuff, but this is a parking option that's not part of the business. It's basically a general...
Uh huh.
Something with parking, it's not like it's on, it's not like it's right here.
Uh huh.
I was pointing out the fact that this is all private. This is all your driveway.
Yeah, that's my driveway. And this apartment is in front too. We didn't have to do a variance to have that apartment in front because, again, our property line is here. And it's just a, it's a whole different program. It's not like it's on Grashit.
Right.
Just, and then this was just such a nice match. You know what I mean? It fits better. And with all our tractor equipment, we can't put any kind of parking or because of the lot, we can't fit it in here anywhere. And we were trying to...
So the cul-de-sac is private from this point forward?
From that point forward.
So for that, that is correct. That does change things up down.
Yeah, this is our property on here. It's not a public road. It will never be. Not my look at that.
Yes, yeah. I believe that both myself and the engineer reviewing that looking at that as a street.
It's a street name. It's being a little gate right here.
Yeah, that would be, you're there, that is...
That changes things up a little bit.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, what we want, you know, we just thought it was very, and we put a lot of thought into this company. Match that.
No, that makes sense. I mean, obviously, we can see what you did there. It makes, it makes sense the way it was designed.
And you mentioned that access, residence for all the...
Um, did we mention that or did she mention that? I think that she mentioned.
She mentioned that that needs to be...
Yeah, normally, that would be, that would be drawn on the site plan just to be able to show that...
That's not what this is.
No. No, it would be drawn and labeled.
So we really need to...
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, what we would, in light of that, in light of the fact that that is, that that's private, there really wouldn't be the objections here in terms of what's here from the planning and just be needing the engineer's correct here for the site plan, the drawing there. So the lighting would still take place, the different elevation questions that she has, question on the drainage and that.
We did provide light fixture detail with shielding.
There was part of the, there was a focus of...
Part of the site plan, but it, we did not provide photometric.
Okay. I think that's what she was asking for in the letter. And I just gave you my copy, but I believe, I believe it is required as part of the site plan. It's required to have a photometric.
Photometric plan and additional details on the proposed building wall packs must be provided to verify if the exterior lighting is properly shielded. So it's written here, it says there is, the photometric metrics still required.
No, they're silent.
Number seven.
I'm just looking in the ordinance.
Well, it says that light's not available for buildings that are adjacent or facing. It's not really facing in and around the property, is it?
I think there is to the north. You go across the drain.
I'm sorry, I can't reach it back there. I mean, the closest you had is some buildings to the town. This is, this is all their property.
It would end up being on the west side. It was supposed to be north and the west.
Here, which is the...
West side.
This is just woods over there. It's a tiny detail on what's on the photometric.
I'm just looking here for the, for the list. Lori should have provided, been able to provide you a list of all the items that were to be on the site plan. That's what I was just looking in the documentation that I have here. But I do not have that in my packet in front of me.
Is there any information? It says it can't be facing, but does it say, is there a distance? Like if it's residential, so far away, then it's okay? And then what's the restriction of the lighting?
Faces or joins to a residential property.
I mean, how close do they consider it is facing or joining residential property? It's almost like they probably need to lie.
Uh huh. Yeah, it really, it is, you're right.
Madam, correct me? I have a question. Are these generally from...
Can I introduce myself?
Yes, just reintroduce yourself. And let me tell the trustee, he's a liaison from the council. And they do things in a much more formal manner.
Oh, really?
We are, okay. So we talk, we talk. People that, they just raise a hand, we speak.
Oh, okay, yeah. Another protocol.
Right, and then when we make recommendations, you take it back to the board.
Okay.
We're just pulling, we're just pulling.
We're just pulling, okay. I just want to, this is the first time I get this. I just want to know...
Fair question. What is the warehouse?
I wanted to introduce myself. Yeah, I just want to know what is in the warehouse that you guys are employing, that kind of thing.
Okay. I'm John Mitte from Project Control Engineering. I'm the one that prepared the drawings here, the site plan drawings. This is Mr. Ryan Acavetti. He's the owner. And he can answer any of the detailed questions about the building, but basically, this is a warehouse building. They have an excavating company. They want to be able to store equipment inside the building and get easy access in it. One of the things that I guess that was confusing on this is, this is all, these were all cul-de-sac lots surrounding this little road. And this road is a private road. It's entirely their site and part of it. These lots were created years ago. One of the things that we had to do was we were requested to submit an application, which we did, for a property combination because there was actually two cul-de-sac lots here. So those lots were acceptable at the time that this was zoned and created. So, you know, when there's discussion here about lot width, I mean, these are existing lots of record technically and we joined to in order to make this work. We actually think that this is a pretty nice plan. It does have parking in front exactly identical to the building next door, which is Mr. Acavetti's office. So there is parking that this is connecting to, actually, right here. And we're just kind of carrying it around in the same fashion. It is very yard facility, all connected, interconnected. And this will be a great way to be able to put equipment indoors. I think for the most part, just going through these comments, other than, there's two issues on here that's... One is the lighting. If the lighting is an issue that faces to the north side of the residential property, and one of our requirements was that we put up a firm with landscaping to shield that property. We do have down points directed fixtures that are shown in the corner of the plan here. If you think that those are too intense to put on that side of the building, we can certainly downsize those fixtures to something smaller. That's not a, certainly not a deal breaker. The landscaping is another thing. It looks like we're off by five square feet. Instead of 160 square feet of landscape area, calculated for the parking, it looks like we're off. I don't know how we are, but that's what's saying here. So, so five square feet of landscaping on the site is miniscule item to resolve. The, let's see. Most everything else in here, I think, you know, if we're in agreement that this is a private cul-de-sac and the parking requirement in front yard is with, then we not apply necessarily.
That's correct.
It seems like we have the lighting and the five square feet of landscaping to deal with from the planning issues. When we go to the engineering issues, if you don't mind, I'd like to go through these just so that we can, when we attack this, we're done. You know what I mean? We'd like to just be, finish it off and make sure that we resolve everything that we want. The first one is, proposed building is strapped in two separate parcel lines. They must be combined. Certainly, we made the application of combining those properties already. The plan must provide dimension from a property line to the edge of the floodplain as shown on the plans, along with clearly identifying the floodplain elevation. We give elevations all the way along the floodplain on this plan. And we very clearly show the floodplain exactly all the way along the property line. So the floodplain varies all along the way the drain is, but we've given the elevation and we've actually identified the line. So, you know, if some additional dimensions are necessary, it's clearly not within the building area. It's beyond the landscape. It's in the existing drainage ditch and ditches that exist right now. It seems like it's not a real critical element. The sidewalk on parcel 06 that identifies approaches into this parcel, which is proposed to be part of the development. That would be the sidewalk that's here in Ron's building right now that's, we're kind of connecting to. Actually, we are connecting to it so that the sidewalk is consistent all the way across. Plans must clearly provide a contact name and number for the proprietor. Plans must include a paved service drive to detect trash dumpster location and all loading and unloading zones. Here's plans indicate delivery vehicles will exit the paved loading and unloading zones. Here's onto gravel surface then pass on the concrete surface and the shelving. This item, I think, we would need your planners' comments on if this is necessary or not. Sorry, Jeff, I was just talking about the driveway. I was talking here about leaving a paved service drive to the dumpster and to the loading and unloading zones. What we've done is we've provided paved parking for any employees and any people coming to this building for access. The remainder of this is all yard area with heavy equipment. This is proposed to be gravelled with just a pad around the building. As most would put outside the garage doors, a pad to be able to park on outside the building. So there is no proposal here of paved anything further than that.
Right. Yeah, I understand that.
Okay. So that seems adequate. The plan must show both existing and proposed grades to ensure proper slopes away from the building. This really should be an engineering item. Obviously, we know that in the end, that we have to provide detailed engineering drawings with grades, drainage, sewer line, water line, for your engineering firm to review for their approval. But I would suggest here that that has nothing to do with the site plan layout. The site plan shows you that we're going to have catch basins in the parking lot. I don't think grades have anything to do with or would not affect your plan layout. If I told you what the grade was and would make any difference to you, I don't believe. So that's truly an engineering item. Photometric plan and additional details on the proposed building will actually be provided. We just talked about the lighting. Given the size of the proposed landscape area, irrigation system won't be needed to be included in the engineering plans. So that's saying for engineering later. Provide dimensions for the proposed width of the landscape room. It's actually already on the drawing, with the drawing. Plans must clearly show the setback lines for the proposed development. The setbacks are all listed in the chart here in the drawing, and they're shown off of each of the property lines already. So not sure how we change that. Existing easements should be clearly identified with library and page numbers. Plans show that there are two existing water leads on the building and the parcel. So what this is alluding to is number 11, is there's existing utilities that are on part of this property that lead to the office building right now. We can certainly, it does make sense during engineering that we put those in an easement so that if a lot was ever sold, that it would be, could be separate. But again, I think this is an engineering item, not necessarily an item. Plan must clearly identify fire lanes. Architectural rendering must clearly show the address on the building. And then as you turn this over, this lists out the engineering items later that could be addressed in engineering review. And again, this all deals with soil erosion permitted, drainage, and that kind of thing. So I guess looking at this from a site plan level, and I do this exact same thing on the engineering consultant for other communities. We do a review the same way. Done this for many, many years. I don't see here what is necessarily affecting your site plan or approval for layout of this site plan. Certainly know we have to go to engineering, get engineering reviews. That's very common. But if there's something here that affects the site plan, for example, if there was, if we had to put in a detention basin, and now you go, wow, you didn't show it on your site plan, you know, you have to come back and show us where you're going to put that. That's the kind of thing that affects the site plan layout. But I'm not seeing anything right now that's affecting this layout. Unless I'm wrong, please let me know. And we can go from there. But I'd like to get through this process so that we can go on to engineering and move forward so that we can get this building constructed. So please give me your thoughts and let me know what I can do.
Number 11. The last sentence on number 11 of this last document. An easement should already, should exist already, or one will need to be provided as part of the site plan approval process. Is that easement on there? Do we have?
No. There's no easement. There is existing water in sewer that's running right close to the lot. That's what we're identifying.
Does that certainly have to be added on the real estate document?
It could be provided as part of the engineering documents that are required for approval before we get a building permit. Certainly, we have to have all of the engineering sewer water utilities. It's identified on there.
Okay. Have you guys had a site plan come through? You guys haven't had one come through since I've been basically on board yet. It's been a while. If I could just do a point of clarity, as what we're trying to accomplish here, recognize, it's been a long time since the site plan's come through. This is the first site plan that's been reviewed since I've been on board as the planner with the county representative. In this preliminary process, what we're really looking at, we're looking at the concept, we're looking at the idea. We're looking at it from a macro level for the zoning. Does it fit here? If we need to fit it, are there changes need to be made? Recognizing that we're dealing with a private road there, these other elements come out. So what the gentleman's basically telling us is, what we have in front of us is approving the concept. If we approve that and it goes on, we'll be doing a preliminary site plan review. Then they will take these things back to engineering and they can get out with the details of the plan. So just, that we're clear, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, what we do, I mean, because there is stuff that's set forth in the ordinance. That's stuff I'm more concerned about than the engineering. Because, I mean, we do have an ordinance, you know, that is set forth. So because of the ordinance, we need to make sure that we're in compliance with that. Now, I understand, like you said, his office building next door doesn't necessarily, maybe not comply with the ordinance as it stands because you talked about how the parking's in front of the office. That's just right next door. So, I mean, how do we go about that so that we, A, we're not proving something that doesn't violate the ordinance?
I guess I can't speak for the history of the site and how you guys were developed prior to that light industrial, if there was a variance given for the parking as it is now. If we were following the letter of the ordinance, we would look at that parking requirement would either need to have a variance or would ask for a redesign and have it shifted.
But it's foolish to think that there should be a redesign. I mean, it's obvious that.
Correct. And I don't think they can make it happen.
Well, right. Right. And then there's obviously not an issue with it. I just want to make sure that we either have a variance on or, you know.
It should, it would require, that element does require a variance.
Okay. Even though this is a private road.
Even though it's a private road, because it's part of the light industrial. It is a stipulation, the light industrial zoning, that parking not be in front of the building. So if we're following the letter of the ordinance, which we are supposed to, that would be cited, as we cited it, as requiring a variance.
Which I don't know who would have an issue with that. I mean, I don't have an issue with it.
No. And generally, when we're working up the communities as these things come up, you know, sometimes some of these projects will have this to two or three variances. And they'll be, they will move through with the project. You know, so if the project is being moved through, contingent that the variances are approved as well by the community's council.
Okay, so you're talking about the conditional conditions.
Correct.
Because I think Mr. Acavetti would like to try to get started.
Correct. Yeah, we, I mean, we were planning on erecting a building in April.
Soon as possible.
Soon as possible. And we were excited. I think everybody's excited. Driving as soon as possible with the note that our different systems are.
Was that the only variance that was required?
Uh, there was that, there was the easement.
Was there not another?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a 60%.
63%, right?
Yeah, there is, there is, there is the width requirement there. And then there's the five square feet of landscaping.
Of landscaping, rather.
Parking. That's. And we could go back and rerun those numbers and see if we five feet.
Five inches.
Could make the berms two inches wider.
Yeah, be five feet across the hall.
More than five inches.
And then what is the, why does the variance have to be at 70%? I mean, what's the?
Well, what you're basically saying is that there is standard ordinance that you have so much frontage. Anytime that you're going to deviate from one of those standards, you're looking at, regarding a variance for it. In that case, it would be a dimensional variance.
What do we consider if 70% of the?
I have it out here, I was looking at it.
Are you still?
Thank you. Yeah. Did I take notes? The front access, at least equivalent to subgrout, shows a minimum height.
Where's the fire line destination?
I mean. Considering this.
Yeah, I mean, they're basically on a curve there, there's 109.
So if I get 70%, is dimension back from the last, the widest?
Uh, no, it's calculated differently. And Jack's way, that's, I don't have it in front of me, but on an irregular shaped lot, it's calculated differently.
So this, is it considered this is the frontage? You know, driveway?
That's the front.
It's not like this is the front. That's not the front.
I can't, I don't know.
What do you recommend? What do you recommend?
In terms of, in terms of, in terms of the width. Is to have, to have that. Access, especially if, you know, if you're on the.
Approval.
If you're on.
Someone's going to have access to that.
Okay. You want to finish your sentence? We had to review that stuff. What's your recommendation?
I would say my recommendation would be to approve the preliminary site plan as it exists with the condition, with the condition that the lot split will be approved tomorrow night by City Council Village Council. Who's seen the objections, that should go. Next week, when it's here tomorrow night?
Next week.
Next week, okay. Apologize. There should be no objections there. And then that those, that those variances be requested.
I would like the variances listed.
Ready to list the variances?
Yep, the variance for.
The three variances.
The three variances. We have a dimensional variances for width, a parking relocation variance. And if we're going by the rule of the letter, the variance on the square footage for landscaping. We can just change that.
Five square feet of landscape area.
Put up another tree.
One foot of sidewalk.
Throw a shrub.
Get an extra placement of parking, add a couple inches.
And then entrance and the other one.
There's a tree right there.
Landscaping.
Fix that.
We're going to fix the variance.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Recommendation has to be put in a form of motion to.
I'll make a recommendation to site plan review.
Okay.
Site plan review for Tamar Enterprises Warehouse pending the condition of approval of a lot split by village council on Tuesday. Upcoming council meeting. And also approval of a dimensional variance, parking relocation variance, and landscaping variance. If it's required by then, not finding the square footage necessary.
I'll second that. Support. Motion has been made and supported. We'll call.
Man of the chair, Akers?
Yes.
Commissioner Rasney?
Yes.
Commissioner Muselli?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Crank. I'm sorry. Crank mouth. I don't get it.
You got bad a car call.
Yeah. I did. Okay.
Thank you very much, folks, for taking the time and going through each of these items and making sure.
And thank you for your patience with us.
Thank you, guys. Avenue your team, guys.
Hey, guys, not that this, not that this affects anything that has to do with the ordinance, but you have 25-foot pad around the building. If I have to put a fire truck back there, collapse on it one and a half times, so I couldn't safely put a truck back there if I had to.
Wow.
It's considering the siding of the building, I might would anyway. But
Why? Was it?
The rules for putting a fire truck, if the building was on fire and I had to put a truck next to the building, it collapsed on us one and a half times the height of the building. So if you've got a 28-foot tall building, I cannot safely park a truck in the backside of that building or any side of the building can be considered sick.
That would be fall, I mean, we're going to run trucks all over that place.
Okay.
So that would be all.
So it's not just this. It's going to be everything.
We have so many, so much tracked equipment, you know, that concrete just doesn't.
It doesn't pull up. So all this area out here will be, will be able to support.
Yeah. 100, well, yeah.
You guys have trucks bigger than we do.
Yeah, 250,000.
All right, cool.
Yeah, we are super anxious.
Well, it's because of the, of the track and stuff that you.
All the track.
Instead of the tires and stuff like that.
Yep.
Ron has also decided to fire suppress the building to. That's a very smart.
Yep, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Tell your friends.
Have a good day.
I will.
Matter of discussion. Public comments.
I have a matter of discussion. As we talked about the variances tonight, we just sent these gentlemen on a path where they may have to come back to the village and ask for one. I don't know the history of how we established our zoning board of appeals, but it appears that we have a group that has been put into place, but can never seem to meet. There's pending issues out there that become, I guess this is my editorial from professional standpoint, there's pending issues out there.
Yeah, not the first one that I've heard this from, so.
For here, that really could stand with these guys to be controlled if we want, if we want to do everything on the up and up. And to have to go through the process. We've got enforcement things that we can't do because we haven't taken action. But the question that I have. Sorry. Oh, no problem. The question that I have and for your guys' consideration is, under the zoning enableable act at the state, the state says all communities that have zoning have to have a zoning board of appeals.
Correct.
But within their zoning board of appeals rules, that zoning board of appeals can be a separate body that is elected or is appointed by the village council, or the zoning board of appeals can be the village council. Now, in most of the communities that we're also assisting, their Utica City Council, other places, they are the zoning board of appeals and they take care of business at their village council meeting. So if these gentlemen were coming back before us and we were sending them on for approval, we'd send them on for approval for their variances and everything, right, to village council. It can all be done in one fell swoop and another meeting doesn't need to be scheduled. Now, that would be, to me, would be the ideal situation, but I don't know why we're structured the way we are. If there's political reasons or.
There's an ordinance for the.
What do they need, they need that for councilor?
They don't need. Last needed. And it has been an issue for many years with.
Who's that?
You know what, I hate to say right now because it's changed.
It may have been done, huh? We've got to do people.
It's nobody from aboard, they're all residents, but they're just.
Yeah, it's all residents.
It's all residents. I hate to say because some of the people that I think are on it might not be on it anymore.
Right.
So, and I wouldn't want to put them out there like that. But it is an ordinance, so we would need the ordinance. Would we not require an ordinance to change?
Change, yeah.
And then. So probably the best thing would be to not hinder this to let Chris know, our president, Dilbert know that he needs to make sure that that board is prepared, is to appoint any vacancies at the next council meeting and make sure it's prepared to meet in the next month.
Okay.
It's probably what I would.
I think there's always that.
And maybe going forward.
Maybe, maybe.
I'd recommend addressing that. Because we don't want visitors to have to go through all this. They're ready to deal with it.
That would definitely streamline the process and I think you see them hamstrung by, we can't pull together.
Right. And they have to continue to wait.
I wanted to ask is since Chris is new in this position, sometimes we'll bring something complicated before the board. Even when Brett was here, Jeff would appear with you, explaining what the.
There he does.
Or even if you could send a letter to the board and to them, explain the need and the necessity. If you can't make it, that's.
I guess it's a question, if you want to bring it forward.
If you may ask questions.
They're going to get the site, they're going to get the lot split in front of them. Really, what you guys did tonight, you guys basically gave them the blessing to go out and get the rest of their act together and pull the plan together. They'll come back to, they're going to come back to the village with full engineering drawings and stuff to submit to the building department. Once that comes back, we look at it again and then we'll make our recommendation to village council.
I want to make it easy on Chris.
Okay.
Coming on board with one of the board, kind of give the things that we have done.
It's busy, first time seeing him today.
Yes, Mr. Carmichael.
Yes! I had a great night. I had it. Yeah.
I will. If you can't make it, maybe we can meet before then.
Yeah, no, I think, I think I should be able to.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Go. All right, okay. Public comments on now agenda items. Planner's report?
No report. I guess I should save that for the planner's report.
Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, I did have something I did want to tell you guys.
You had something to sign on?
Yeah.
Just came to watch.
Um, our department, every quarter, puts together a planner's group. Uh, we bring planning and economic development professionals together from all the local communities. So people from planning commissions come, their planners may show up, economic developers. We've never had anybody from New Haven come, so we'll make sure you guys are on the list. But also want to let you know that one of the initiatives of our department, we received a grant from the Advancing McComb Philanthropy to allow us to sponsor one person from every community, so there's 27 communities in the county, um, one, um, what do you call it? Tuition for MSU Citizen Planner Program. So more details are going to be coming out of that, um, and all the communities are going to get letters of that, but I'll definitely let you guys know, so someone will be able to take advantage of that.
Where is the first event you're having?
Um, the first one is going to be, actually, we hold them, we hold them around the county at different venues. It's usually, it's, it's a lunch that's hosted by the department.
I'm all in for lunch.